That brings us to the consent calendar. We've got two items. Approval of the minutes for the council meeting for -- oh, I gotta back up. This is the September 19th, City Council meeting. September 19th. Look at my minutes rather than my agenda. So we're gonna approve the minutes of the council meeting from September 5th and the minutes for the council work session for September 5th. I have approval.
I have a question.
Okay.
When there's a correction to the minutes, are they changed in the public record and on the website?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I didn't notice the corrections from the last meeting.
It was corrected and then put on the website. It was corrected and then put on the website?
Okay, I didn't see it a couple days ago. But then, I have an old computer.
So, the consent calendar, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Signify by saying nay. And the consent calendar is approved. So I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Oregon first responders, both career and volunteer, include law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, 911 dispatchers, and search and rescue personnel who bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect Oregon families, visitors, and businesses. And whereas Oregon first responders do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others, and their commitment to continued training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency cooperation make them prepared to serve, protect, and rescue our citizens 24 hours a day, 365 days per year. Whereas Oregon first responders are a vital part of every community maintaining safety and order in times of crisis, and volunteering in our schools and community organizations. And whereas acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens provide first responders needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face every day. And whereas Governor Kate Brown has proclaimed September 24th through the 30th, 2017, First Responder Appreciation Week in Oregon, and encourages all Oregonians to join in this observance. Now therefore, I, Steve Milligan, Mayor of Monmouth, hereby proclaim September 24th through the 30th, 2017, to be First Responder Appreciation Week, and in the city of Monmouth, and September 27th, 2017, as First Responder Appreciation Day. And ask all citizens in the city of Monmouth to show appreciation for our first responders. And I'll sign this today. And with that, we're gonna move into reports. I have a couple things to report on. I got to participate, I actually got to meet with Dr. Jennifer Cubista, Central School District Superintendent, last Thursday, had a really good conversation about where the district's going, and if there's any ways that the city can help in with those outcomes. And right now, she's not sure, she's still brand-new, and she's still trying to figure out what all the district is doing on its own, but appreciates the support from Monmouth. And then, on Monday, I was able to attend the State of the University address by Dr. Fuller, and it was really good to see the direction that the university's going. And I was joined in that event by Manager McClure and Counsel Silvernagle. And with that, we'll move to -- oh, and I was there too. Attorney General. So we'll move on to reports of council representatives. Counsel Silvernagle.
Great. Arts and Cultural Commission met on September 11th. I was not able to attend, but I was able to, Mark Fancy was able to share his draft minutes with me. So let me hit a few highlights. They had election of officers. Aaron Marr will serve as the Chair, and Roxanne Belts as the Vice Chair. They spent quite a bit of time, it looks like, talking about the July 4th festival and kind of next steps on how we can continue to improve that. Everything from how to get more adults involved in artwork and that type of thing, and artists, as well as maybe the school district and the younger groups as well. They started to, Commission reviewed the arts and cultural grant project summaries they had. They discussed kind of the local holiday events around the time of the WU tree lighting, and how they might have involvement in that in December. And they also suggested maybe we might start rotating city artwork that they've purchased over the years. So we'll see how that comes out. They also, Mark had shared a calendar, and like the first three months of the year, they're primarily working on arts and cultural stuff, and then April through July, primarily July 4th. And again, then they turn over the year in September for election of officers, and then they kind of have projects, or it's a good time for them to work on projects in the fall. So that's kind of their calendar. And that concludes my report.
All right. Counsel Stanky is absent, so we'll catch up with his report next time. Counsel Johnson.
Yes, we, the Historic Commission met on September the 6th, and one of the big projects we have is working on the photo research with the Oak County Museum and with Western Oregon, so that we can digital the pictures and get them online, and also, we'll be able to maybe put some up in our city office and their TV. Historic Railroad Display with the Parks and Rec Commission, we're gonna have to meet on, they're gonna meet with them on the amphitheater on Main Street, on the main floor, on the Main Street Park. And this is to put a sign poster up for the, to show that this was the railroad terminal in the early days of Monmouth, when both the railroad crosses were at the amphitheater. But that has to be done with the Parks and Recreation, so when the new planner comes onboard, we'll try to get those two to get together, 'cause you can't put something up without the other one approving of it. Cost of projects. We need two new members for the Historic Commission, so put those down. Too shy. We need more work on the walking tour signage, and we, and Mark had a good, has a good picture, and we're starting with another one or two of the buildings downtown, and what I try to do is put them in the windows instead of hanging on the buildings. See if we can't, some of the businesses have already said we could set them in the windows so you can see them when you go by, and this is for your walking tour on your apps, on your phones. And then, also, we need to work on local grant programs, I think before November or December. And so, we're kind of at a standstill, that Historic can tell the new planning person comes onboard. We're in that middle. Far as the Planning Commission, at a public hearing, can't go.
Counsel Schinkel.
The Parks and Recreation Board met on September 13th, and had a few activities during that meeting, elected new officers during that meeting. We selected a few playground toys and playground equipment to submit to, who are we submitting that to?
Public Works.
Public Works, excuse me, thank you. For approval, and then have an estimated timeline of maybe spring of 2018 for installation of those. Speaking about the eclipse time capsule, the lid for the time capsule is on its way. Have a nice engraving that commemorates the eclipse, and to be opened in the next full eclipse, that'll happen in 100 and something odd years, 2169, so I will not be around for that. Talked a little bit about the railroad signage and things like that, so the group is pretty excited to hear more about that, and talk about the possibilities there. Talked about the National Day of Service Project, had about 50 volunteers show up at party, but nonetheless, they showed up. And it was a, it was a good project, and Mark was very appreciative, and we're very appreciative of all he has done for us, this committee and this city. That concludes my report.
Yeah, thanks. Any community announcements?
Streets are back. On the way back, any?
So the freshmen arrived this week.
Right.
And classes start on?
Next Monday.
Monday. So, Monmouth will start filling up again, and being its robust little self for the school year. Scott.
Yeah, thanks. Couple things. The bike camp community had their open house down Genowood's Park, regarding the bike campground, so we sent out notices to properties that were nearby there, and actually ended up with eight folks that came and talked, and had a good discussion with some folks. We had comments, we thought, a couple different ones, you know, some opposed, some thought it was an okay idea. The fun part of it was after you kind of wound that down, they just thought it was kind of more of a block party, and had fun just talking to their neighbors, so it was a good function for that reason anyhow. And then the second one, the Highway 99 project, remember we had a question about what cost could be reimbursed, and there was a possibility that what we'd already done could not have been because it wasn't pre-authorized. It actually has gotten worked out, so actually those prior costs will be eligible now, so that'll help out. We still don't have a clear picture on what the real number's gonna be, but at least we've got that one taken care of. So, nice work from ODOC, 'cause they had to work all through the federal government to get those things authorized. And then the last one, just to note, the new student feed, which is actually a Monmouth Business Association sponsored event, was last night. Kids go through a phalanx of businesses, I think there was like 20 or 22, they get to know those businesses. We give them a free meal, kids are always great to work with, and it's a good way to introduce the community to the students.
That's it. All right, thanks. At this time, citizen comment time. This is a time reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda, maximum three minutes per item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this time? Could you come on forward and state your name, and why don't you? Chuck, can you just move the microphone over to her, since the microphone's more mobile?
Actually, I'm fairly mobile. The comment that I wanted to make, I don't know if all of you can see it, there's something missing on my chair. The footplates are missing. And in talking to the tech that comes to service my chair, he said he has many clients here in town, and all of them have the same complaint. The sidewalks are in such lousy condition. They jar our chairs apart. And let me tell you, those chairs aren't cheap. My 10% co-pay for this guy here was almost $4,000. So, I wish there would be some way that some of these sidewalks could be straightened out and cleaned up. I mean, it's not uncommon to be rolling along and go perplunk, because your piece of sidewalk is that much higher than the one you just sat down on. You get to the other side, same thing, in reverse, you don't have to go up that high. Not good for the chair. I've got divots out of my casters on the rubber, where the sidewalks are destroying my rubber tires. And I really, really wish you folks could enforce homeowners fixing those things. I understand that's the way it works, and I know up in Portland, when a walnut tree branch swung down on the sidewalk, and people complained to the city, they came out and informed my father, he had to fix it. And he did. Cost him his life, but he did. So, it's a choice of, you can fix the sidewalks, or you can allow us to submit our co-pay for repairs. I've got a repair bill coming out now that's somewhere between $150 and $200. I'm on a fixed income, and that hurts. Now, I don't know if the concept is that people in wheelchairs sit very quietly and look out the window all day long, waiting for life to come see if they might like to take part. I'm not one of those kind of people, and I don't know anybody who is. We want to be able to get out and do things, go places, meet our friends, but not on these sidewalks. It's destroying our chairs. This is my car, it's also my legs, and I don't like it when the surface I have to work right on destroys it. So I would really appreciate it if you people would get some thought to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get your name?
Mina Bella. That's spelled M-I-N-A. Last name is B as in boy, E-L-L-A-H.
Can you live here in Monmouth?
I do, I live in the Village Apartments.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Is this on an on-agent, Ben and Will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always.
Okay.
Music in the park is quit, done for the year. However, I must admit, I'm a little surprised that some of you are not wearing slings on your arms tonight for the twist and for patting yourself on the back for overtaking the meet and greet the other day at the library. That was very disappointing. I unfortunately got called away, so I didn't get to see all of it, but very disappointing. I think you showed probably the worst side of the council you could've. Citizens as well that came, didn't represent all the citizens, although it was purported you were here to represent all the citizens. It was an organized group, and I would, if I looked around, I would suppose it was from one neighborhood that did it, but that's beside the point at this time. Hopefully the treatment you gave those candidates didn't cause them discouragement to the point they wanted to withdraw, which was probably the intent of that. I'm sorry, they had to go through that. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I was really here to report on the Music in the Park series. We've had a very good season this year. I thank the council members that attended those meetings. We had nine regular, nine regular sit concerts. We started two days before that with the 4th of July events. And I served on the sound crew, so in addition to those regular things, we added the Mel Brown concert to that. And for those that really paid attention on, around the eclipse, we had a Pink Floyd, Pigs on the Wind concert, which was attended. I gave up trying to keep track after 1,200. My guess is there was probably between 1,500 and 1,600 people in the park that night. It was a very good concert, enjoyed, people really enjoyed it. We had no disturbances, no events from the public that we felt, ah, we have a problem. Didn't have any of that, they were all well-maintained. The Chamber of Commerce provided us visitors' guides that were handed personally, not to everyone, but they were personally handed out to the visitors, so they got to see a guide from Monmouth Independence, because a lot of the people were from out of town, and we knew that was gonna happen. But we supported the community, we wanted people to know this was Monmouth, come and We had an average attendance, probably about 450 people. The largest was with the last concert of the year, we had about 600 people there. We had 36, I say 36, local businesses that supported that concert. We had to have another banner rack built because we ran out of room, and we were very glad to do that. This series does represent the city of Monmouth. People from all over the valley come to these concerts. I was in Corvallis about mid-concert, and there was a couple that came up to me and said they make a point, try to come to this concert every week. So we bring people in from outside the community, as well as what the bands bring, because they all have followings, and they bring them in too. We had a very good concert, very good series. The last thing I wanted to point out, because we've had issues in the past a little bit, if you attended the Pigs on the Wind concert, you saw a big screen on the back of the theater. You saw lights, you saw monitors. They also had smoke and fog. But the important thing I think you need to hear is the fact that those were put up with nothing being attached to that structure. The lights were put up on the rails that were built for that, the TV screens on the outside were hooked onto the rails that were built for banners and that such a thing. And the big screen in the back was put up on a aluminum rack that the band brought and posted up there. That screen is very versatile, or that stage is very versatile, and it can be used for a lot of things. The other thing that impressed me about that concert was, in all the concerts, 1,500 people there, when they left, that park was clean. And that's, I realize we had a lot of people out there, but that was true on every concert. That's community pride, that the people who come to these concerts have. And I know some disagree with the concert, I understand that. But it is important to this city. We do represent this city quite well. We bring in business to this city, and I would hope the council would take the time to visit those businesses and support them on a local level. Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Any other citizen comments at this time? Now, you're set up to speak on.
I know, but I have to respond to this, what Bill just said.
Well, let's get names.
So can I get your name?
I do so well today.
Happy to do that. My name is Wendy Hudson, and I live on East Gwin Street. And I would just say that I'm a little bit distressed by Mr. Foster's opening comments that seem to indicate that there was a plot maybe to undermine the meeting of the candidates. I have to say that if there was, I know nothing about that. I attended the meeting that night to meet the candidates. I knew nothing about them. As far as I know, nobody else in the room knew anything about these candidates, that's why we were there. It was very awkward that we were all milling around in two separate circles, meeting the candidates separately, asking the same questions, going over to the next candidate, asking the same questions. And I, my sense was that there was an undercurrent of discomfort. It was awkward. And so there was, in a way, I would say, a groundswell from a number of people who wanted to have us all sit and listen to the candidates. And it was asked of the candidates if they were all right with that, they said yes, they seemed comfortable throughout the whole process, and I think everybody seemed comfortable with it. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there for the record. And I would also, in this case, agree with Bill, that I thought the eclipse concert was fantastic, and I had a lot of fun, and I think that Mark Fancy probably had a lot to do with that, so I'd like to thank him for putting on a great concert. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Stephanie McKee, and I live on Spark Street in Monmouth. And I just wanted to, I was at the Meet the Candidates event last week at the library, and I thought it went really well. I don't live in any particular neighborhood, so I don't, you know, I'm kind of like on the edge, out there on the edge, I'm not in any group. And I just wanted to let you know, and I thought it went well, the candidates seemed fine to me, it was a groundswell movement, we wanted to, you know, instead of saying one question and then going and asking the same question over in this group, it was confusing. And so anyway, it was a groundswell movement, we asked them if they would, you know, mind letting us ask the questions, and they could both answer them. They were like fun with it. So anyway, I appreciated it, I think that there was, one candidate was really outstanding, and I was happy to be able to have a little bit of input, you know, make my comment on the card. Made me feel like I was part of, part of the solution, you know? So anyway, that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you for those. So now we're gonna go into Agenda Item 1, which is a public hearing, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Zone Change 17-02. I'm not sure of the pronunciation, this is MIGAR?
Migar.
Migar Corporation, 800 block, South Warren. And with this, we're gonna be following the land use hearing procedure that's up on the wall, and so at this time, Director Fancy?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Zone Change 1702 would amend the Comprehensive Plan Map designation from mixed-density residential to high-density residential, and change the zoning from mixed-density residential to high-density residential for an approximate 5.97 acre parcel. Property is located at 800 block of Warren Street South, Helmut Road, and is identified as a Cessor map, 8438, tax lot 800. Just to briefly explain what we're doing here, we have two maps, we have a Comprehensive Plan map, and consistent with our plan is our zoning map for each of our, so what we're doing in this case, this is a request to change the designation on both of these maps from the current designation of mixed, or density residential to a designation of high-density residential. The way our Comprehensive Plan map works is, commercial properties are just labeled in general in the plan map as "commercial," and they're shown in that kind of Pepto-Bismol pink color. Our industrial properties are shown in the plan map as simple gray for "industrial," and then within that, we have the various industrial zones and different types of commercial zones. For our residential land, there's a one-to-one correlation. This property is designated on the plan as mixed-density residential, it's shown zoned as mixed-density residential. And that follows through for all of our zones, our low-density residential, medium-density residential, and the high-density residential as well. They each have a corresponding Comprehensive Plan amendment that is exactly the same. All right, and if you'll turn to, I'm going to be walking through the findings in the staff memo to the council dated September 12th, I think that's probably the second page in on your packet. So I've described what the request is. In this case, the applicable criteria are from Monmouth City Code 18.15.060 standards for Plan Map Amendment, and 18.15.050 standards for zone changes, and I'll be reviewing those in just a second. The subject property is just shy of six acres in size, and is currently vacant. It has frontage and access available from Warren Street South, also known as Helmut Road, and Echo Street South. The property has approximately 134 feet of frontage on Warren Street South, and 374 feet of frontage on Echo Street South. Utilities are available to the property from both streets. In the area, land uses directly north are zoned high-density residential, and include two parcels, tax lot 603 and 700, recently purchased by the city of Monmouth for a new Monmouth power and light facility. To the northwest is a single-family residential property, tax lot 802, which is zoned low-density residential. Further north, the Gwin Street Village Duplex subdivision is zoned high-density residential, and that's been developed on the south side of Gwin Street East. For the subject property, the south property line marks the south city limits in this area. Properties to the south are located outside the city limits but within the city's urban growth boundary, or UGB. These include a 38-hundredths acre property developed with a single-family residence on tax lot 801, and approximately 16 acres of a 71.78 acre property, tax lot 1300. The remaining approximately 55.7 acres of this property are located outside the urban growth boundary. Tax lot 13 is currently in farm use and is vacant. Tax lot 801 and a portion of tax lot 1300 located within the UGB are zoned suburban residential by Oak County, because they're outside the city limits, and are designated as low-density residential on the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan map. Properties to the west and southwest include single-family residences along the west side of Warren Street South, and the Griffin Estate subdivision farther west. These properties are zoned low-density residential. Properties to the east include the Rosemead Industrial Park, a partially-developed industrial subdivision zoned light industrial. Farther east is a storage unit facility abiding Highway 99W, and to the southwest is a vacant 20.97 acre industrial parcel. is a vacant twenty point nine seven acre industrial parcel, Tax Lot nine oh five. And these properties are zoned industrial park. As we look at the review criteria for this application, the first are from eighteen point fifteen point oh six oh, and those are mirrored by similar criteria in eighteen point fifteen point oh five oh. So I'm going to kind of combine the two as I walk through and describe them. The first is that the proposed Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment or the zone change meets at least one of the following: that the current designation is erroneous, and this amendment or zone change would correct the error; that conditions in the neighborhood surrounding the land for which the plan amendment or zone change is initiated have changed to such a degree that the current designation is no longer appropriate, and the new designation would conform to the new conditions in the neighborhood; or third, there is a public need for land use of the kind for which the plan amendment is initiated, and that public need can best be met by the plan amendment or the zone change. So the applicant needs to show that the application meets at least one of these three criteria for both the plan amendment and the zone change. And on page four of the staff report, there are findings related to this first criteria. And in this sense, in this case, the applicant is pursuing Criteria and C for both of these sections, and that is that there is a public need for land use of the kind for which the zone change or the plan amendment is initiated, and that public need can best be met by the plan amendment or the zone change. Staff finds that the applicant's submittal includes information showing that currently less than three acres of buildable land designated as high-density residential is available in the Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary. Since two thousand and twelve, city staff has maintained an inventory of buildable residential land. Staff concurs with the applicant's assessment regarding the lack of available high-density residential land. More than eighty acres of buildable land designated as mixed-density residential are currently available within the urban growth boundary. The applicant also notes that nearly seventy percent of the residential buildings constructed in Monmouth since two thousand and structures with five or more residential units. Staff finds that based on the lack of available buildable land designated as high-density residential and the construction information showing that multifamily residential units constitute the majority of residential units constructed in recent years, staff concurs that there is a public need for additional high-density residential land, and staff finds the request meets the approval criteria from Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh six oh sub one sub C and Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh five oh sub one sub C. The next criteria for both the zone change and the plan amendment is that the proposed change is consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds that the following are applicable Comprehensive Plan goals and policies: the housing goal, to ensure the existing and future residents of Monmouth the opportunity to live in safe and healthful housing and to provide a choice of housing types and densities. And housing policy number three, the City of Monmouth shall ensure that multifamily zone lands exist to accommodate multifamily and manufactured home park uses. The transportation goal from the Transportation System Plan, to provide for and encourage a safe, convenient, and economical transportation system, which includes adequate accessibility to all planned land uses, alternatives to the automobile, and good infrastructure maintenance. And transportation policy four, Monmouth shall utilize the Transportation System Plan for guidance in all land use planning and project development activities. Staff finds this proposal would make an additional five point nine seven acres of multifamily zone lands available, consistent with both the housing goal and housing policy three. This proposal has been reviewed regarding impacts to the transportation system. The applicant submitted a traffic impact analysis, and that analysis shows the proposal is consistent with the Transportation System Plan, and the proposal is consistent with the transportation goal and transportation policy four. And staff finds the request is consistent with the applicable Comprehensive Plan goals and policies and meets approval criteria from Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh six oh sub two and Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh five oh sub two. The next criteria relates to adequate public facilities, services, and transportation networks are in place, and it notes that a traffic impact analysis may be required by the Public Works Director to determine the adequacy of existing and planned transportation facilities and demonstrate compliance with Oregon Administrator Rules, known as the Transportation Planning Rule. Under Criteria Three, staff makes findings that public utilities are available to serve the property from both Warren Street South and Echols Street South. Page five of the applicant's submittal details the location of available lines and services. The property has frontage and access available from both streets. Findings in the staff report related to the traffic impact analysis submitted by the applicant show that the proposal would not significantly affect the transportation system. The property developer would be responsible for construction of street improvements as necessary along both frontages and any extension of utilities to serve the site. And staff finds that the request meets approval criteria from Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh six oh sub three and Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh five oh sub three. Finally, the fourth criteria is that the proposed change is appropriate considering the surrounding land uses and the density and pattern of development in the area. Staff finds the property is in a developing area, and some adjacent properties to the north, east, and south are currently vacant or partially developed. The applicant's submittal notes that the proposed change is consistent with the land use pattern of properties to the north extending to Gwin Street East that are designated as high-density residential. Single-family residences are located to the west of the subject property across Warren Street South and also include two adjacent properties to the northwest, that is Tax Lot eight hundred, and to the southwest, Tax Lot eight oh one. The property configuration is such that the Warren Street frontage is only one hundred and thirty-four feet long, while the Echols Street frontage is three hundred and seventy-four feet long. Consequently, the majority of development of the property would occur closer to the Echols Street frontage and the partially-developed Rosemead Industrial Park and vacant residential land to the south. And staff finds that the request meets the approval criteria from Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh six oh sub four and Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifteen point oh five oh sub four. Finally, staff has included findings in the staff report on page seven regarding the traffic impact analysis that was required. That analysis met the standards from the zoning code, and the traffic impact analysis analyzed traffic impacts at both access points available to the property on Warren Street South and Echols Street South, as well as impacts at the Echols Street South and Gwin Street East intersection, and the Knox Street South and Main Street intersection. The analysis found that the proposed redesignation rezoning would result in an additional forty-eight vehicle trips during what's called the PM peak hour, typically four to six PM. Accesses and intersection study would operate at an acceptable level of service, and expanded vehicle queuing at intersections would not result. The proposal will not cause any of the impacts identified in Monmouth City Code eighteen point fifty point oh three oh sub three sub C or any negative impact to a transportation facility requiring mitigation measures such as turnpockets, additional lanes, signals, stop signs. There are standards related to site review for traffic and flow of traffic and providing for alternate means of travel beyond just the car, and those are the type of standards that would be related to actual site development of the property. Any future development of the property would require approval of a site plan or review application, and the specifics of the actual site development and the traffic patterns would be looked at at that time. And staff finds that the traffic impact analysis submitted meets the applicable standards from Monmouth City Code eighteen point one five oh point oh three oh. Going here, this application was reviewed. Any Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment Zone Change applications require two public hearings. First, there's a public hearing by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission conducts that hearing and offers a recommendation to the city council. So this is the second hearing on this issue. And the reason for that is that only the city council can by ordinance amend these official maps, and that's why there's this additional step here. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on August fourteenth to consider the request, and at that time, they recommended that the city council approve this request. You have a recommendation way back now on your initial kind of cover report on page two. You have the recommendation from the Planning Commission as well as proposed motions. And I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Do we want to do, council questions now, or do we want to—
If there's anything on what I presented to date, I think that would be good, but we'll stay away from deliberation or opinions, those kind of things, and say that after we've conducted the hearing.
Okay.
Mark, besides the scarcity of the high-density zoning acreage available, what other indicators that there's actually demand? I assume these are going to be apartments?
Probably, yeah.
Something of that effect. What other indicators are there that there's a high demand for more apartments to go up?
Well, we're getting quite a few calls for it. When we have multifamily land available that's being developed, we're actually finding a lot, we're doing a lot of infill projects too, where older homes, less desirable houses are being taken out, and more intense duplexes as such are being developed. Yeah. But on its face, the scarcity of acreage, I think, kind of points to that.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Don, do you have a question?
I'm going to wait. I'll wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Ron?
I'm going to wait. I'll wait for them.
Okay. So we're good on those questions right now?
Okay.
So now we want to have the presentation from the applicant. Is the applicant here? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and audience. My name is Rich Catlin. I'm a land use planner with recent associates representing the property owner Mike Smith, owner of Migar Corporation this evening. I wanted to thank Mark for his in-depth and thorough staff report and his presentation tonight. You have our application materials in your packet. There's a lot of detail there. I'll just hit a few highlights, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. First of all, as Mark mentioned, that there is a, we've chosen the path of demonstrating that there is a need for additional high-density residential land in the city. Mark pointed out that the inventory of land zoned high-density is down to less than three acres, and that represents less than one percent of the land zoned high-density residential is actually vacant and available. Mark is right. A lot of the activity in recent years for permits have been on small lots, redevelopment of existing structures, but this is a vacant piece of land, and so it makes it unique in that respect. The staff report also mentions that there is more than eighty acres of mixed-use residential that's available for development. So switching over about six acres from that to high-density would not significantly impact the inventory of mixed-use residential. Regarding the traffic, as Mark pointed out, there was a traffic study done that was prepared by a licensed traffic engineer. The scope of that traffic study was first agreed to with the Public Works Director before any work was done to analyze the impacts of the project. So there was city sign-off on the scope of work at the very beginning. Essentially, what the study does is it measures the amount of traffic for the existing zoning compared to the amount of traffic that could be generated by the proposed zoning, and the difference, the delta between the two is really what was analyzed. How would that additional traffic on the road impact nearby intersections? And the conclusion of the report was that it would not significantly affect the existing system. And just to put it into perspective, that difference between existing and proposed was thirty-eight trips. That's trips into the site and out of the site. So you split it roughly evenly, and over the two-hour PM peak hour period that Mark referenced, thirty-eight trips equates to one vehicle every four minutes, approximately three to four minutes. So that's the level of impact on the traffic system. Utilities are available on both frontages. Sidewalks would have to be constructed along both street frontages, ADA accessible sidewalks, as well as ADA sidewalks within the site. Mark mentioned the pattern of land use and zoning in the area, and talked about how this pattern is consistent with the proposed use as far as European existing high-density residential land, both developed and zoned to the north. So our request tonight is that you follow staff's recommendation and also the Planning Commission recommendation, and that you're going to approve this application tonight with the reminder that there would be a follow-up application prior to any development to hammer out a lot of the details. So tonight, you're not approving a specific site plan for the property, just a zoning designation, and the actual site plan would come up at a later date. And at that point, both the city and neighbors would have an additional opportunity to take a look at how the land could be used. So that would be the city's second bite at the apple, so to speak. So with that, I'll be quiet, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
You have one. You come up with thirty-six trips in a trip. How many units will be there? I mean, you got to have a, you have a basic idea how many units will be on those six acres?
So the trip analysis is based on the maximum number of units that could be developed under the current zoning as opposed to the maximum number of units under the proposed zoning. And if you take, just do a simple math, you apply the density of the high-density residential, and you end up with one hundred and nineteen units. So that was the number that was used for the trip generation analysis. But if you step back and you look at the site, one hundred and nineteen units is going to be tough. We're not saying it can't be done, but there's a lot of wetlands on the site. So we've already taken a long, hard look at how the site could develop, potentially how many units could go on there, and whether one hundred and nineteen units will fit or not, we don't know at this point. But that's the number that was used hypothetically for the traffic analysis.
Now, is that the difference between the high-density and the medium dens? I mean, don't you sort of, you know, you've got the mixed dens, the mixed density is your, you know, your established number, and then the—
Right.
—one hundred and nineteen is your high-end number. So aren't you dealing with the difference there?
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Yes, I stated the obvious, but I didn't hear you say that.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to hear from persons in favor of this. Seeing none, any persons in opposition to this?
Good evening again. For the record, Wendy Hudson. I live on East Gwin Street, and I'm also, as some of you may know, a former Planning Commissioner. As Mr. Fancy just stated in his staff report to all of you, City Code requires that proposed zone changes must meet four standards, which he outlined. With standard number one, an applicant has only to meet one of three conditions listed in that standard. Both Mr. Fancy and Mr. Catlin here tonight have addressed standard one C, as neither is the other two conditions within standard one really applies. So they have focused on standard one C. In his August seventh testimony to the Planning Commission, excuse me, Mr. Catlin stated that there is a public need for more high-density residential land in the city because currently, quote, "there is less than three acres of buildable land designated as high-density residential." Both gentlemen just confirmed that in their testimony tonight. The staff report to the Planning Commission concurred with this assessment. However, I want to bring to your attention that zone change standard one C is not about the availability of buildable land. It is solely about the availability of a particular land use or zoning. I quote standard one C again for you. Quote, "There is a public need for land use of the kind for which the zone change is initiated, and that public need can best be met by a zone change." Much of the west side of town is zoned high-density residential, as you can see from the zoning map on the wall. If anything, one could make the case that there's a greater need for mixed-density on this side of town because Tax Lot eight hundred is the only property in West Monmouth that is zoned mixed-density. So while there may currently be a paucity of buildable land zoned high-density residential, there is in fact no lack of high-density residential zoning or land use in West Monmouth. Thus, in my opinion, the applicant has failed to meet the first of four required standards, and therefore, the application is not in compliance with the requirements of the zone change. I also point out that in June of this year, PSU's Population Research Center released its population forecast for Polk County. From two thousand to twenty-ten, Monmouth's population grew at a rate of just two point one percent. The forecast for the period twenty-seventeen to twenty-thirty-five is an even slower rate of just one point five percent. The forecast for the period 2017 to 2035 is an even slower rate of just 1.5%. Monmouth currently has fewer than 10,000 residents. Eighteen years from now, in 2035, we are looking at just under a total population of 13,000. So in this slow-growth climate, the state of need for more buildable, high-density residential land becomes questionable. In closing, I want to challenge the city council to meet a high bar for proposed zone changes of any sort. Such changes should not be taken lightly. Presumably, some wisdom went into Monmouth's original zoning map. If the city council changes zoning simply because a developer has stepped forward with a high-density development plan, then we are not being faithful to the original vision of Monmouth's citizens. Do we really want an apartment complex with 119 units possibly, which I point out is the maximum, to be the first thing that greets people driving into Monmouth from the south on Helmut Road? Do we really want to compromise an increasingly rare wetland type that comprises nearly half of this property? Wouldn't we rather integrate fewer, not more residences with existing, with the existing wetland to create a small win for the wetland and a modest win for housing? I ask you to reject this application, not just because it has failed to meet the required standard, but because it's the right thing to do. Further, should the city council see fit to leave the zoning as it currently is, I request that you provide specific direction to the planning department that any mixed-density residential development of this tax lot be integrated with the wetland and the stream and that the, the stream being South Fork Ash Creek, which runs across the northwest corner of this property, that it be integrated with the wetland and the stream and that the area provide for educational signage and non-intrusive walkways so that all citizens of Monmouth can enjoy a little wildness in the city. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other persons in opposition? Are there any persons with comments or questions? At this time, we have taken rebuttal testimony by the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments and rebuttal. First is that you have the recommendation of staff and the planning commission that the first criteria is met. We've noted that there is a lack of vacant land eligible in this proposed zone and that the existing zoning has, oh, thank you, thank you. And that the existing zoning has been on the property for a number of years and it hasn't developed to that zone. So changing it to a high-density designation would give it the opportunity to address the housing needs of the city. The city has adopted a natural resources inventory and a natural resources protection plan that does not include the wetlands on this property. So the city has already made a conscious decision not to protect the wetlands on this property. However, the wetlands are subject to regulation by the Oregon Department of State Lands and by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So there are still high bars of permitting to be met with those two agencies. So we don't have, there's no clear sign to impact these wetlands. There is a process to go through. There is protection that must be done and that's apart from the city's process and we will integrate that into the site. So there is a protection plan in place, it's just not the city's plan. And those are all the comments that I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, there's questions by any counselors? Will this be directed towards you, Mark, or?
Where are we at here?
We're at seven.
Yeah. Well, there's no, yeah, there's no questions of the applicant. You could, yeah, go ahead and you could throw questions to me. You can close the hearing at any point if you're done taking testimony. So.
Okay.
So close the hearing now if you want, yeah. If you've asked questions of the public as much as you wish to ask and you're only going to talk to me, you can close the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at this time we'll close the hearing and now we can ask questions of Mark. We can, is this when we can start the deliberation? So, Ron, who wants to start first?
All right, I'll start off. The proposed comprehensive plan map amendment meets at least one of the following standards. There's only one standard that has to be met, is that correct, Mark?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And the one that has been chosen is number C.
That's correct.
Letter C. And that one reads, "There's a public need for land use of the kind for which the plan amendment is initiated and the public need can best be met by the plan amendment." I don't see anything in that statement about buildable land. It's mostly land use. And if you look at the zone map, boy, Monmouth has a lot of high-density residential zoning. I don't understand why we need more. If anything, it seems like that property should remain mixed, mixed residential.
Under the statewide planning program, under statewide planning goal nine, which is the housing goal, the city is required to provide land for housing for a variety of housing types at a ver, at a variety of densities and price ranges. So there is no saying we're going to stop with that type of land use or we've seen enough of it developed and we don't wish to see more. So there is, we are, we do have a requirement under statewide planning goal nine to provide various amounts of land in various zoning categories that is buildable land for development.
And a lot of that zoning of land that's high-density residential has been built already.
And so we're, and we continue to provide vacant land, as is our responsibility, under statewide planning goal nine.
All right, I still don't see any description of a need for buildable land.
Well, it says the land use of the kind for which the changes saw is multifamily housing. That's the land use and we don't have enough land to build that land use. And this would provide land to build that land use. So that's the land use that's being referenced there. It's high-density residential multifamily housing.
Okay, I still, I still don't understand because there's already a lot of mixed.
But it's not vacant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're to continue to provide opportunities in the marketplace. We don't look at a map and say, "Look at all the acres, we're done." We continue to provide opportunities for people to develop housing for a variety of housing types and price ranges. And that's what this provides. Additional land for those people where apartment living is affordable housing for them. It's an affordable housing issue.
Yeah, it just underscored it. It is, it is correct. The obligation to provide a variety of housing needs is a going-forward obligation. You don't get to a point and say, "Well, we've supplied that need, no more." It's, you are always looking at the, at the land that's available and making sure that it's available to meet the, the housing types, a variety of housing types.
Then another question, why doesn't the code say that?
That's state law.
It's state law. There's nothing in here about that?
The state law, it worked together. We don't restate all of the state.
So it's not here in the staff report? Nothing about that?
There is mention, and I think, Mark, you mentioned at least the, yeah, the inventory of buildable residential, yeah, it's addressed, I think, maybe not in the detail that we're having the conversation here, but it is addressed in terms of providing a variety of housing types, land for variety.
And we've addressed the comprehensive plan policy that relates to providing, provide a choice of housing types and densities. Our comprehensive plan is referenced. Our comprehensive plan, which was approved by the state land use agency as being consistent with the state land use planning goals, specifically in this case, goal nine.
Is there any way we can see those? Those state land use?
Yeah, they're available on the, the.
Can you make them available to us?
Not at this meeting, but you can get a copy of them. They're available on Y, the Department of Land Conservation and Development.
It's goal 10.
Oh, it's goal 10, I'm sorry.
No, goal nine.
Goal nine is economic development, goal 10 is housing.
Right.
So Department of Land Conservation and Development, there's 19 statewide planning goals and that's one of those goals is housing.
John?
One of the questions that I had, as I looked at the application, I was sort of surprised to see that the applicant selected 1C because I had some of the same sort of sense, but, but and then it caused me, and when I first did the read, I'd, I'd outlined or underlined the new amendment would conform to new conditions in the neighborhood, which leads me to the question, and I just can't recall, has there been any rezoning in that, the light industrial or industrial or in a way to allow power and light to build their facility?
No, they're, they're applying for a conditional use permit application on land zone high-density residential directly north.
Okay.
The substation is to the east, but the proposed new facility is subject to a conditional use permit hearing tomorrow night from the planning commission.
Sure.
That's how they're doing it.
I knew there was something going on there, but, but it seemed to me that, that as I looked and as I sort of scratched in with your description, what was where in the, in the surrounding areas, you know, that seems to be sort of stuck in there between a conditional use and industrial land and we have across the road the low density. So I guess I was just wondering whether there'd been any, any history of zone change?
Not, not that I'm aware of in 10 some odd years, the maps. The maps, ownerships have obviously changed, but not, yeah.
Sure, okay. And then, and then, you know, I guess, and this is a bit of a rhetorical question and frankly, in my mind, it doesn't relate to the, to the current application, but won't we always have this need with only three acres remaining?
For a while, which, which, well, the city's going to update the comprehensive plan and address that need by probably rezoning a lot more acres as a legislative act, not as a land use application. So we're waiting for this new population projection that was mentioned. And so now that we have that, whoever succeeds me will move forward on amending the comprehensive plan to address that long-term need. And so you're looking at, yeah, there will be other acreage that will be rezoned in the future as part of a legislative process initiated by the city. Yeah, not a land use application.
So then by legislation, we would either extend further into the, into the existing urban growth boundary or we would rezone existing?
Yeah, probably the latter. The latter is probably the most reasonable. Is that existing land, probably something on a neighborhood of 40-plus acres would be rezoned as high-density residential land through a longer comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, yeah. Because it seems, it seemed that that, that's going to continue. This will have this anytime somebody wants.
Well, but it won't. Once this, once you've adopted an update, then you've met your, you've met needs and that criteria was going to fall off the table for quite a few years. If someone had come in when the last time this was updated, that criteria wouldn't have worked because there was more land then. That land has disappeared.
But, you know, we hear often enough from current residents and oftentimes longtime residents that, "Gotta go build another apartment building." And, you know, and the answer is yes, because it meets the, in my mind, it meets the the criteria that we need to meet. But, but when we get to this legislative process down the road, that's going to be a pretty good conversation.
You'll look at, you'll look at maps and you'll look at some options and, you know.
Yeah, read, do the whole thing. I think that concludes my questions and my comment there.
Ron, anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to go the other way, the transportation goal, which you have on the finding. To this, I look at this piece of property and in here it says to for, to provide for it and encourage safe, convenient and economical transportation system, which includes adequate accessibility to all planned land uses alternatives to automobile and good interstructure infrastructure. This, what's happened there on Warren Street, which they only have 134 feet on Warren Street, is that the houses on the west side were allowed to build without putting sidewalks in. There's no sidewalks out there. There's no sidewalks on the east side. So you increase this to say 80 units. We're not saying 119. So if people want to walk to the campus, and this is what we're looking at, is ride a bicycle or walk to campus, they have to be on the road. Okay, so there's no place to walk. I mean, I'm looking at the transportation end of it. The only other good access is out the bottom at Echo, you know, on the bottom. Okay, then they gotta come clear back through town or Gwynne Street, up to Warren. It knocks, where you want to go. Come back into town that way. To me, 36 trips per the two-hour span is, you know, that's, and that's a set standard that you have to go by, the state during transportation. But everyone we have, and I can ask one of our counselors right here over on Mar Court, how many vehicles parked in that place that don't even meet the parking criteria up the streets on each site? I think 36 is way low. So that means you're going to put, I'm just looking at transportation side of it. And that's what we're supposed to look at here, plus they meet one goal. You know, on this, I'm looking at comprehensive. I can go back later. But I'm just saying, you're low on that. You're going to put more traffic back into neighborhoods and the streets aren't built for it. That's all I'm looking at, is your transportation goal that you have, as you say here in your findings. And I know you have a guide to go by. The guide's all crazy because if you put 80 units in there, there's going to be two cars to three cars per unit. I can go show you every one of them, the top, high-density, because I've looked at every one of them over the last 10 years. So to me, 36 is really low because most of the kids are going to be driving to campus. Not hardly anyone will be walking from that distance. That's my only thing. I look at this, I see no good area access to get out of there by walking other than go to Echo and over to Gwynne. And that's, anybody that's walk is going to take the shortest route. They're not going to take the long. I think that we don't need a transportation goal, is what I'm trying to say on this deal. I mean, I, I just think that the streets out there aren't ready or built for that many units. I'm just throwing that out on your transportation end of it. And I understand about the development and that's why I ask how many units because we're built, basically building this for affordable housing. Affordable housing is mainly for 90% for the college students. That's the world.
Daniel Davis, Aaron?
I'm good for now.
Aaron?
I have a question in my mind, but it's difficult to formulate. I guess, so it's, it's like a two-step process here. The first step is to get it rezoned. And the second process would be to address the actual plan.
The act, well, before you develop anything more than a duplex, a residential duplex, you're required to have approval by site plan review application.
And who approves?
That's, that's reviewed by site plan review committee that consists of the community development director, the public works director and a member of the planning commission. Currently, that's Donna Cable. The code provides that that could be referred to the planning commission to review. But again, that is a, and that's, or that is a zoning compliance type of review. So we're looking for, do you have enough off-street parking? Yes, no. Do you meet your setbacks? Yes, no. Meet your landscaping? Yes, no. So that's, that's what, and that's what that's intended to do, to make sure that developments comply with all the requirements. The code says very specifically, if a development complies with all the requirements at site plan review, the planning commission shall approve it. Very specific.
And so I get, my next question is for Lainey. On that, because I do agree with Royal. The, I, I think if you're, if you're talking about families moving into these things, you're going to have one, maybe two cars per unit, but they're going to be filled with mostly college students. So you're going to have one person per, one car per person is generally how I see that. But how much, how much leeway does the council have in interpreting that? That, that analysis, I guess, the traffic impact analysis?
The city has very specific standards in its zoning ordinance regarding what goes into a traffic impact analysis and where the data is to come from. Yeah, and it's to be reviewed by city staff and city staff has done that review. The applicant's mittel comes from the, the traffic generation, the numbers come from the approved source. That's the Trip Generation Manual, ninth edition.
So you're not making up, you're not getting, you're not coming up with numbers for each application? It's based on the standard metric?
It's based on the standard metric?
Right.
So that there's consistency across the board? And you can take it, you can take census of the point of development, and in five years, the number of vehicles could all be different anyway, based on the actual account. So it is derived from the manual.
Right. And it's not based on the number of cars per household, it's that it's done by doing calculations and research and surveys with transportation engineers as to how much traffic is actually generated by different types of developments. A donut shop, a grocery store, an apartment complex. So when you look in the traffic study, it shows right from the generation, trip generation manual, how many trips that each unit would generate. And then those are proportioned as trips either going out, or trips coming in. And so typically, the PM hour is used, because in the AM peak hour, most trips are to go to work. In the afternoon hour, or the PM hours, you've got people going shopping, doing other things, running errands that weren't necessarily up and out and driving at seven-thirty in the morning. So that's why the PM peak is used, that's the maximum, that's the maximum time. I would also add that the, you know, as a requirement of developing the property, the applicant's going to have to develop frontage on both, they're going to have to do the street improvements along their frontages. And I'm hopeful that this is going to spur Warren Street being improved in a larger sense.
And depending on the impacts of the development, you could impose some off-site improvement requirements as well.
Sidewalks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to be, there has to be a nexus between the development and the off-site, but it is possible, as the development goes forward, to actually address off-site improvements, just like the access to the, to the property.
And then as we, and as through the site review, site plan review process, we're looking at the adequacy, the width of the driveways, the curb cuts, whether those meet the standards, on whether or not there's adequate off-street parking, whether that's met, on the sidewalks are constructed to the proper standard, also that there's pedestrian access within the facility. I'm talking about alternatives to the automobile, and the sidewalks are always involved with that as well. And that there's bicycle parking. So there's, there's different layers of the transportation system that are reviewed when the site plan review application comes forward.
And if I could throw in a couple things to remember on this, is that the current zoning would overwhelm the road. So if they build on the current zoning, it would put too many cars on there for what's looking like, you'd still have the same access issues and inadequate sidewalks and infrastructure. This is just a little bit notch above that. The other thing is, is really key things, is it's our current deficiency. You know, the developer didn't do something here to then come in and, you have to upgrade everything. It's everything, everybody uses that kind of as part of the system down there and puts the load on that, so you've got to be careful if you're going to try to tag just this project with a bunch of improvements when they're only a small portion of the whole piece.
And part of the reason we require traffic impact analysis, so it is to determine and to help assuage irrational fears about how much traffic will be generated. When someone says the sky's falling and the earth will end because of the amount of traffic, we're able to point to the traffic studies, it does not appear to be the case, based on the information provided. So that's, that's part of the reason we do it, it's kind of a two-edged sword.
You know, one of the things that I, I mean, all of this is, and Byron, when you get drilled down on that, that, those traffic studies, you talk about voodoo math, you got voodoo math, but nonetheless.
We've adopted it, yeah.
Yeah, we've adopted it, and we're going to live with it. But, you know, as I just sort of look at this, as I've got, you know, and on my own little scratching, we've got the power and light yard and facility to the north. Beyond that, further north, we have additional high-density, I believe, we've got light industrial to the east. You know, it seems that a, that a, you know, high-density residential unit seems to fit there. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, it's just a little more, that just feels better somehow. I know that's not part of the criteria, but if you look in terms of how it fits in the neighborhood, I think, I think there's, there's some logic to this. You know, the, I mean, the transportation, I think Royal's got a good point. You know, if we are interested in promoting, you know, bicycles and pedestrians, Warren Street as it sits right now is not it, but that doesn't necessarily, that ought not to be the driver on this, on this particular request, you know, in my mind at least. Hey, I'm going to shut up, but I'm going to say, Mark, this might be your last one of these, and we all, we all, we all may or may not agree with it, but I just, I really, you know, we all appreciate the detail, the sort of impassive nature and dispatchant nature that you use when you apply these. You've done it over the years in my time here, and it's, it's good work, and thank you.
I have another question.
Okay.
If I may. Has there been an updated wetland delineation for this tax law?
I think the applicants have been working on that, and again, that's the Department of State Lands that would do that.
So we don't have that available for us to see?
It wouldn't be part of the zone change, it'd be part of the development proposal.
Okay, so no wetland delineation available for that tax law?
Do you have a wetland delineation available?
Am I allowed to speak?
Well, yeah, probably not. Yeah, but no, bottom line, that'll be an issue with development after the zone change.
Okay, so it says in here in the proposal that approximately forty-two percent of this parcel is wetland. And in the findings, it says that this proposal would make an additional five-point-nine-seven acres of multifamily-zoned lands available, consistent with the housing goal and Housing Policy Three. But if almost half of it is wetlands, how will?
That's a gross number, I think, yeah.
Then a smaller amount of acreage would be added.
Smaller amount of acreage.
Than five-point-nine-seven acres.
Okay, so soon that'll be three acres available for building. What's a one-hundred-and-nineteen-unit apartment complex going to look like on three acres?
I don't think anyone said that's what's going to get built. Our traffic impact analysis requires that we look at a worst-case scenario, and that's why maximum build-out under the current zoning and under the proposed zoning was examined. The applicants will need to put together a site plan, and as they noted, the Department of State Lands rules all the waters of the state, so they'll have to prepare plans and mitigation measures that are acceptable to the Department of State Lands. The City of Monmouth does not currently have a wetland protection ordinance in place, that's coming as part of another planned update to the comprehensive plan. But at the present time, we defer to the Department of State Lands for all those reviews. We'll continue to defer to the Department of State Lands for those reviews, but we'll have that codified at one point within a wetland protection ordinance.
Okay, I'm just, I'm missing information here. I think I need to make a decision on how to vote on this, the state information regarding the land use of wetland delineation. And, I mean, there's information in here about how the developer hopes that they'll be able to put in other ways of mitigating the wetlands, but I just don't think I have enough information here.
Well, if I may, since our comprehensive plan has been acknowledged by the state, we make a decision based on our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is drafted consistent with the state goals, and Mark pointed out, you've got on page five, the housing goal, which really is a local restatement of the Goal Ten rule to ensure the opportunity to live safe, healthful housing, and the Housing Policy Three, enough multifamily-zone lands exist to accommodate multifamily uses. So you have, you have the standards from our comprehensive plan that are applicable to this decision. Those have been derived from state law, but these are your, these are your criteria for the decision.
I want to jump to Byron real quick.
So, Mark, the one-hundred-and-nineteen-unit number that's sort of out there, that's assuming, that's how many could go in, assuming one-hundred percent of this property is developed.
Right, right.
So if the state comes in and says, I can use eighty percent of it, that number will...
Right, and when you're looking at impacts in transportation system, you'd want to know what's the worst-case scenario.
Okay, and then, and I guess, as far as the wetland delineation, that's a good question and definitely a concern I have too, I'm just, it doesn't seem that that's a question for this body at this point to ask for that. The question is, because that's, that's a development question.
Yeah, and it's a development question, it's typically addressed by the Department of State Lands and not by the city. So, so whatever mitigation or whatever has to go on, the city's not involved with approving that or not approving that, that's the Department of State Lands. It says if you're going to develop on wetlands, you'll do some mitigation, and we're out of that.
Okay, that clears up anything.
Yeah, a typical condition for the city to place on a development is that you shall obtain all necessary approvals, such as those from the Department of State Lands, and provide copies to the city. Yeah.
So I, a little quick statement on that, is just because we've, our zoning, this change to the zone actually is an overlay, not a must-build.
Well, it allows you to build at that density, but it doesn't, being you have to build one-hundred percent of it at that density, it'd be based on the criteria.
But it's fair to treat the application like an assumption, we're going to build that.
Well, and our code says you're in that zone, you're going to build at least twelve units an acre, so you don't wind up with high-density land with one house on five acres. So, yeah, you're going to build at least twelve units per acre. Yeah.
Yeah, when we pass this, unless I'm misjudging everything, get on the, on the plan two, is that it's basically out of our hands, once we pass this comprehensive plan, because then it goes back to the, to you, as a group, you know, for site plan, or maybe to the council. I mean, we have no more input after tonight.
Yeah, right, it's pretty much for either the site plan review committee or the planning commission to review, at a later date when that application's been submitted, no application's been submitted.
Right, but we're through.
Yeah.
We have no more say in this after tonight.
Unless there's an appeal.
Right.
Well, yeah, the site.
Right. So this one, a bigger motion?
Well, I'll move that the council approve Comprehensive Plan map amendment, Zone Change seventeen dash zero-two, as recommended by the planning commission.
Second?
And if I could, just for the record, then, recite that that motion incorporates the findings in the staff report, supporting the action. Yeah, I simply read the proposal. Yep, okay, yep. Yes, that would be...
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Do I need a rule call on this one?
You'll have, if you approve it, you'll get an ordinance back.
Okay.
Come back.
All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose?
No.
All right, so that passes four to one. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the next item of business, which is a public hearing, Legislative Amendment Seventeen oh Two, amendments to Monmouth City Code Title Seventeen, Subdivision and Partitions.
Although a different type of land use theory, it's a legislative amendment. This would amend the Monmouth City Code Title Seventeen, Subdivisions and Partitions to allow recreational vehicles to be used as living quarters in manufactured dwelling parks, consistent with Oregon Revised Statutes one ninety-seven, four ninety-three. The planning commission reviewed this issue at a work session on June seventh, and they also conducted a public hearing on this on September the sixth. Currently, the Monmouth City Code does not allow residential occupancy of recreational vehicles or RVs in manufactured dwelling parks. The city code defines manufactured dwelling and manufactured dwelling parks. The definition of a manufactured dwelling specifically excludes recreational vehicles or RVs. What we found is that Oregon Revised Statute specifically limits prohibition by a local government of occupancy of recreational vehicles in manufactured dwelling parks. So in your staff report is ORS one ninety-seven, four ninety-three, and what it says is that a state agency or local government not prohibit the placement or occupancy of a recreational vehicle, or impose any limit on the length of occupancy of a recreational vehicle solely on the grounds that the occupancy is in a recreational vehicle, if the recreational vehicle is located in a manufactured dwelling park, mobile home park, or recreational vehicle park, occupied as a residential dwelling, and lawfully connected to water and electrical supply systems and a sewage disposal system. Subsection two of that does not limit the authority of a state agency or local government to impose other special conditions on the placement or occupancy of a recreational vehicle. The special conditions here would mean standards related to placement of RVs. The planning commission first discussed this at a work session on June seventh. The commission reviewed standards, at that time from the City of Independence. What's satisfying, usually typically I do a lot of research and see what's out there and try and meld the best set of amendments we can, and actually, there's really not much out there that other cities have done regarding this issue. But when the, the planning commission took a look at it, they felt that what would be adequate would be that RVs should be allowed in designated manufactured home park spaces. So that means when a manufactured home park is designated, it has to go through a conditional use permit approval process, and there's a site plan that comes within that shows the designated number of spaces. And that, that can't change without an additional conditional use permit to expand a park. So there's a limited number of spaces, so what the commission felt was that as long as RVs, they should be allowed in the designated and approved manufactured home park spaces and required to properly connect to services. So the proposed amendments would allow recreational vehicles to be used as living quarters in designated manufactured dwelling spaces within a park approved under the city's manufactured dwelling park procedures, which includes approval of conditional use permit. Under Monmouth City Code seventeen point thirty-five point oh four oh, designated manufactured dwelling spaces are required to have proper connections for water, wastewater, and electric. The amendments would require a wastewater receptacle connected to the sewer system to accommodate RVs which are not so equipped. I'm finding that typically, RVs, yes, they are so equipped. A copy of the amendments, along with a cover letter and a public hearing notice, were sent to the owners of the four manufactured dwelling parks in Monmouth on August seventeenth, and an additional revision to the amendments on August thirty-first, and sent that revised copy out, again, with a hearing notice, to the owners of the manufactured home parks. I did not get any responses from that. The planning commission held their hearing on this matter on September sixth. At the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission recommended adoption of Legislative Amendment Seventeen oh Two, and you have that recommendation in your staff report, and as well as a proposed motion on page three of your staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On page two, it identifies, well, in a couple places, back on the Legislative Amendment, on number three, utility connections, it's identified there as equipped with connections to running water, electricity, and sewage disposal. And then, on the proposed amendment, middle of page two, amendments would require wastewater receptacle connected to the sewer system to accommodate RVs which are not so equipped. Would that be an above-ground receptacle? Question number one. And number two, would there be a receptacle for each RV, or could it be a communal one? I just have images of the old Katrina trailers.
Yeah, I think this is, it tended to be a communal one, but I'm looking at, this, let me back up just a second. This grew out of the fact that we've had some RVs that have been sited in manufactured home parks. This started as an enforcement issue, and we had to kind of turn around and say, oops, we shouldn't be enforcing this. So the ones that have been connected are, they're connected individually to the sewer system as well as the potable water, so, but I'm anticipating this would probably be something like at, at ground level type of, I don't, I wouldn't see it as an above-ground receptacle, if there's one even needed.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I guess, that really is my concern, that there might be one needed. And, you know, and if it's an individual, or if you have four in a, in a unit, and they're all running into a, like I say, I have, I have horrible images of the old New Orleans, the Katrina trailers that had those big white plastic square things with two front windows off.
Yeah, but in this case, see, you've got, you've got manufactured home spaces that are, each space is connected to a sewer connection, and that's what the RV connects to. In the event that there isn't that individual connection there, then there is, and only then is there to be some kind of a receptacle. I'm not sure that any of these receptacles are actually even needed. I've looked at the ones that have been sited, and they are, they're connected individually to separate connections at the space where they're parked. Yeah, so, and that's going out...
And that's going out to the system, so there's no, there's no storage tanks onsite anywhere.
But this would allow four?
If needed.
If, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's only one RV allowed per space.
Yeah, right.
So if it were, a double-wide was in there, and an RV went in there, that's all that's in there, is an RV. So there can't be multiple two RVs in one spot.
Sure.
It's just, yeah, just like where it is now. Right, but my concern is, is Laurel and I've got RVs next to each other, and neither one of them are equipped to go directly to the sewer, so we're sharing a receptacle.
Right.
What I'm reading on this is they have to, they have to meet that requirement to be hooked up, unless I missed it even.
There wouldn't be a sharing of a receptacle. It's that if there, if, there would be a one spot in the park where you would move and dump, if you had to do that. I don't believe that's going to be the case specifically. So there isn't, there isn't a, hey, let me, let me get your connection. I'm on a pavement pad, number, space number 15, and next to me is number 16, and all our stuff goes right down below us into the ground, into the connection. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Yeah, yeah, individual hookups, yeah, that's nothing shared, yeah.
Any other questions? Can I hear a motion?
You've got a public hearing, Mr. Mayor. Different format than here. You just, if there's more questions in staff, then you would just call for testimony.
So how for the public hearing? And do I have anybody who'd like to speak on this matter?
Public hearing?
Hearing none. Hearing closed. Now do I hear a motion from the council?
I move that the council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt Legislative Amendment 17-02.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, why, trying, I was trying to find in here, why were these not allowed? What was the legislative intent, if you will, for these not being?
The one, you know, manufactured home, you've got an RV, you can go stay in Independence. That's where the RV park is. I mean, it's, we've got RV parks, and we've got manufactured home parks. I mean, you know, the, our code defines RV parks, but in none of our zones is an RV park allowed. So similarly, it defined a manufactured dwelling specifically excluded RVs, and said that manufactured home parks are for manufactured dwellings only, or for manufactured dwellings, which by definition are not recreational vehicles. So I think it was just a perception. These standards are old, as a matter of, one of the things you'll see in there is that there's, manufactured home parks are required to provide a storage area for RVs. I don't think that world exists anymore, when you've got people living in a manufactured home park that have got, you know, an X dollar value RV just stored over here. So some of these are a little bit older standards.
Any other questions? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone oppose? I say aye. Hearing none, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. And moving on to the next item of business, resolution approving the homeless initiative intergovernmental agreement. And I believe this is yours, Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, a different issue for the council, obviously nothing we spend a lot of time on. I think before, when people thought homelessness, it was an urban area. It was Portland, maybe Eugene, something like that. It's just spreading. It's just getting more and more rural parts of the state, southeast. It's everywhere. Locally, things have cropped up. We're noticing it more here and there, a little bit of an uptick in our area, not huge by any means, but definitely we're noticing it too. Most recently, Salem-Kaiser, Polk County, Marion County got together, kind of cooperative effort that went quite a while, analyzing the issue, looking for solutions, dealing with all the different types of homeless, getting at the different levels, dealing with transitional housing through long-term, to what services do they need. That process wound down, and they said, hey, to really kickstart the strategic plan they came up with, is what if we had a coordinator, a real-life person that would focus on that? So they evolved toward working with Salem-Kaiser and Marion County doing that, and then it cropped up that, we're kind of watching our things going, we asked, well, could other cities cooperate with that if possible? And they actually had already had discussions of incorporating other cities. They actually reached out to even McMinnville up in Yamhill County, possibly doing a partnership. And so we took a look at this. Independence is also interested, and they're going to be signing on. And what this would do is we would be part of the process, you know, a lot of it's going to be Salem-focused, which helps anyhow, because a lot of our people are going to go there to give those services. But we'd be able to learn, kind of piggyback on what they're doing instead of trying to do something from scratch. And then what they did offer up is that they could actually have the person come out and like do a special project in our area, maybe do a better assessment, maybe interview some of the folks that are out here, work with the service integration team that's focused on the central school district, and try to kind of work with that. So there's an IGA, would actually, we would sign off on, and our participation for that is $5,000, and that's a one-time cost. I think the idea behind this is that they would get their work done, and it should just be a one-time, a one-year project.
Any questions?
You're saying this is a one-year project only?
Yeah, yeah, and we're signing on for the year. If, you know, you got to the end, and they said, hey, we still have some more work to do, then you'd come back to the participating agencies and see if they wanted to participate. That obligation is limited.
Should I have got some more before I got it? It also, we would have a person who's sat on that board, so someone from the city would get appointed to.
Correct, good, thank you.
So this is Resolution 1848.
And the reason Polk County decided not to participate beyond the initial discussion?
I don't have a clear picture of that. They were involved and then withdrew, kind of late in the process, and I don't know all the reasons behind that.
That was one of the reasons that I didn't fully understand either, but I wanted to make sure somebody from Polk County was represented. So as a, as a member of the board on COG, I asked if we could be, participate, and then I got with Mayor of Portland, Independence, to sit out with him to make sure I wasn't just the lone wolf here in Polk County on this, and they're cooperating with this. And I had good conversations with Kathy Clark from Kaiser, and so she's really appreciative of our moral support and now our actual support.
And there's some ricochets. One thing, actually, I asked, we didn't mean to talk about some of the terms and, you know, down to sections and the wordsmithing, and I asked, well, has Kaiser benefited so far? And they said, yes, and they said the key one was the place department. Their place department, I mean, they got resources for how to better interact with some of the homeless population, quicker means to call the right people to get them assistance, and so even now, the original process, they already reaped a benefit.
What's the goal? What's the overall, is to reduce homelessness, to, what is the, what is the, I guess, what are we getting for our $5,000?
Yeah, I think the idea is coming up with maybe some more concrete ways to get it, and it's a tough issue because you deal with so many people. It's one of the downsides sometimes of American government, how we operate, and then you layer in nonprofits, and it's a matter of really making sure, how do you get certain people to certain places? Completely different initiative, and pretty radical, city of Salem is actually, instead of, typically you try to go to the people that are the lighter, maybe, level of homeless, maybe more temporary, or just have some minor issues. They've taken the opposite tack, and they want to take the absolute hardest cases with the most problems, and try to actually put that in permanent housing. And so they're taking a really, really radically different approach, and it's going to be interesting to watch.
And I think, for me, the piece that I wanted to participate was, they're going to be looking at solutions to some of the problems, and what I didn't want to have is their solutions impact us negatively.
Correct.
And so that's why I wanted to be part of this. So part of it is, if we're part of the conversation, if they come up with a solution, we can be part of the solution, so we don't become a dumping ground, or, or an overflow, or a, I don't like services over there, I'm just going to hang out. So that was, that was my motivation. So with that.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Scott, you're saying you're, in the staff report here, that the plan aims to better, to provide better services to the homeless, which would hopefully reduce overall homelessness? So we're talking about hope here, and over on the next page, on the, on the intergovernmental agreement, on the first page there, it says that the purpose of the homeless initiative is to identify and launch proven strategies that will reduce homelessness in Marion and Polk County region. What are those proven strategies?
It's checking other native places. People are ahead of the curve trying to find, in some cases, it's going to be developing new ones. One thing that Salem noted was, because this issue's always been a big city issue, when they try to find proven solutions, models, like for more of their size of city, they can't hardly find them. And so what you're going to do is try to get to the bigger cities, and try to figure out how to adapt them down to smaller communities.
Okay, I'm just wondering, if there are proven strategies, why aren't we using them? And then it looks like everybody is going to pony up altogether $105,000, and that's to, among other things, provide the salary for a part-time?
Full-time person.
Full-time person?
Full-time person.
Who has a master's degree in social work?
I'm not sure what the criteria for the position. They've got a, they've got a rough in what they're looking for, obviously.
The job description, full core of master's in social work and.
Yeah, if you want someone in that area, obviously.
Okay, so, and that $105,000 is just for the salary and the benefits for this person. And it also says in here in the governance and oversight, that the executive, the executive director of the COG will have the authority to hire, terminate, and evaluate the program coordinator. Does everybody, is everybody okay with that? It seems like giving that responsibility to one person might be problematic. They might have a difference of opinion, they might have different research they're looking at, and we might have invested a lot of money in paying this person for eight months, and suddenly they're fired because the executive director doesn't, as you might say, like the way they do their hair.
Yeah, so in this case, the COG is taking this on. They do not do this. This is not a service area for them. They're essentially doing it as a favor to the other entities, because the other ones couldn't figure out kind of a neutral place to house the person. They could have been housed in Salem, or Marion County, or Kaiser. In this case, the director's taking it on, but he's going to be relying on everybody around him. But you do need somebody responsible. You need someone to be responsible, that this person is showing up for work, is doing work products. You know, if you tried to have all the entities, you know, supervising someone simultaneously, that can be difficult.
And yet, in the intergovernmental agreement, four point six, it says the COG will recruit, select, and supervise the program coordinator. So, so there'll just be one person doing the hiring and firing, and the COG altogether will be doing the supervising?
Yes.
Okay, that seems like it might be a little bit confusing. I, you know, I, personally, I really hate to see a bureaucracy being developed to try to, to solve an ancient and social problem like this. Homelessness has been around since the first humans put up their first little huts. I think it really boils down to the fact that the people in Salem like, don't like to see people out on the streets and living under the bridges. And from what I've seen in homelessness in other places in the country, seems like the churches and the NGOs do a really good job on this. There are other issues. We, in our family, have a person who's homeless, and it was a cold winter night, and we called him up and said, you better go to a shelter tonight, and he said, oh, no, I don't go to the shelters, they steal things from people in there. So I just, I really have some, some problems with this, with developing a bureaucracy to deal with this kind of a problem. I'd rather give it over to the churches or the NGOs.
It seems like, and I'll disagree with a lot of what you said, Laurel, but it seems like this is, rather than, I mean, given it's a one-year fixed-term deal, it seems that it's a, you know, it's a way to create some solutions that then can be kicked out to the, you know, to whatever level. And how can we best integrate, you know, perhaps there may be governmental services that can be integrated with faith-based services or other nonprofits? So, you know, it's, rather than this one ongoing thing, I'd be, I'd be saying a lot of different things, but this is sort of a task force, and I think this identified with somebody leading it, that will hopefully create some solutions that, that individual cities will have input in, that could be applicable on a particular level. How do we best get around this? Nobody wants to throw money at bureaucracy, I believe. This may not be that, let's hope, and in a year we'll find out.
And I just want to kind of do a little bit more background on this, that this isn't something, my involvement in this isn't just about this intergovernmental agreement. I started talking with the pastors here in Monmouth and Independence, probably in March after I was elected. And we've been, it's been kind of my focus with them. How do we help people that are transient homeless, don't have a place to stay when it's either too hot, too cold? And we do have some transients here, and some of the churches, because they haven't been really working together with each other on this issue, they didn't even know what each other was doing. And so one of the churches actually has five families that are ready to take in somebody if they need housing, but none of the other pastors knew that, even though they'd been meeting with that pastor for years. And, and so part of this is to try and look at, what are the resources that are out there? What are the ones that we're duplicating, and what are the ones that we're missing? Try and find out, is it better for an NGO, is it better for a church, is it better for, you know, Department of Human Services, whichever one it is that can provide the service. And that's part of what this is, is it's almost an exploratory position for this first year, to really figure out what, what the need is, what the current solutions that are being utilized, and how to better do them. Monmouth Police, when I talked to Chief Talon, he doesn't even know what all the resources are, and so sometimes his, his police officers carry around cards passes, so that somebody can get back to Salem. And that's, that's what they can do for. Some of the churches have found a transient person, and they can't put them up in their church because they're afraid what might happen, so they pay for a night at courtesy him. And, and then somebody drops in, and sits all day at Burger Bill, and I talk to the manager of Burger Bill, and they're like, well, I don't have any, I don't have a clue who I should call. The person's not breaking the law, so they don't want to call the police, but the person seems lost and disoriented, but they don't know who to call. So some of this is getting that resource list available to all of us, so that if something like that happens, we know who to call, we know how to get the help to them, so. I don't know that I see this as a big bureaucracy, but I see that it's a, it's a way to give us all access to the information and resources, and actually probably to bolster up when someone calls two-on-one, that they actually get some more accurate information there too. So that's, that's what I've been trying to work on for the last several months, and trying to make sure that Monmouth is all part of that. Because I just don't think that, I know some people choose to be homeless, I know some people don't, and I think we're finding out that more people that are homeless in the state of Oregon are there out of necessity rather than out of want, and I'd like to help them.
I think, I just want to say one more thing. I think if you look at, in the past, the root causes of homelessness were one of two things, either mental illness or substance abuse. But what we're seeing now more and more is that people are homeless because they can't afford the cost of housing. So, I mean, when we go to Santa Cruz to visit family, we'll pop into McDonald's to get a cup of coffee in the morning, and there'll be a stream of people coming in from their vans out in the parking lot, going into the bathroom to brush their teeth, and wash their face, put on their tie, and go to work. They can't afford to live there. So I don't know how we're going to solve that problem.
Well, neither, but at least we're taking a step, and that's what this is trying to do, is take a step. Ron?
I, I see this as a one-year program, so you're not going to get a real good person, because if they think their job is only one year long, that's usually it. The second thing is, we're putting money out, at six months, can we have a review of this? I mean, in six months, somebody ought to be putting some information out, right? Not at the end of one year? I'm just saying, if we put the money out, we want to join the initiative, we want to see what's going to happen, which way they're heading. By six months, they haven't know which way they're heading, I mean, you know, different programs, how we're going to try to help.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll work out a protocol for reporting.
Yeah, so, I'm just saying, I look at this, and it's a one-year program, and at six months, before the end of the year, that's, what's, where are they going? You know, with this study they're doing, where are they going?
Yeah, like I said, we'll have a member on that group, so they'll know what's going on.
Yeah. Do like to do in Hawaii, take all the Conex boxes and go put them into houses.
And it appears there's a termination clause that allows early termination and with a prorated refund as well, within a year, so.
So I hear a motion.
What was the number?
1848.
I move approval of Resolution 1848, approving intergovernmental agreement relating to the creation of a program coordinator for the Mid-Monmouth Homeless Initiative. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing them, roll call please, folks.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar?
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. And I thank you all very much for helping make this go forward. All right, next item of business is Resolution Adopting Historic Resources Inventory Update.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an update to the historic resources inventory that's been prepared for your adoption. The initial historic resources inventory was developed in 1987. It wasn't adopted until 2012, but we've also adopted updates to that in 2010 and 2011. In 2016, the city received a certified local government grant from the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office in part to update the historic resource inventory. This is done by doing what are called reconnaissance-level surveys. That is, that properties are surveyed from the exterior fairly quickly. It's intended to be done in less than 20 minutes. And this is just to make a first cut and look at the age and historic integrity of various buildings. And you can see at the bottom of page one is a list of the various categories that various properties may fall in. In this most recent update, 83 properties were surveyed, and those were primarily between 19, those were primarily constructed between 1940 and 1956. So this current inventory would take this up to all the buildings that are at least 61 years old. The buildings are basically evaluated whether or not they might be eligible at some point to be either on the National Register of Historic Places, or perhaps part of a larger group like a neighborhood that might become part of a, might be eligible for National Register designation. It doesn't, this is meant for our edification and to understand that, have an awareness of the buildings that we've got within our community. It's not pointing any of these buildings specifically towards National Register nominations. In your staff report, or I gave you a couple of samples, the entire document here is about more than 83 pages. But there's a couple of samples of a couple of the dwellings that were looked at. One was constructed around 1930, is considered not eligible and not contributing, and that's because of the bugaboo of all historic preservation is the addition of vinyl siding. Vinyl windows and vinyl sightings are a great bugaboo. Yeah. Yeah, there was probably about 120 properties that I looked at and ruled out, at least 40 or 50 properties, simply because, well, they were either rundown or that they had vinyl siding or vinyl windows that automatically kind of disqualifies. I think there will, I was talking with fellows about this today, I think there will come a time when we've got 50 years and older are considered the eligible age, and we may someday come upon a time here soon where vinyl siding will be of the norm of that period, and it will be so designated as historic buildings. And so, so one thing, we didn't provide, so the resolution has all of the inventory information attached. What I did provide you was our ongoing spreadsheet that shows when properties were originally inventoried, and then some of them have been subsequently followed up with additional inventories. If you look on the spreadsheet, they're on the far right-hand side. I call it the 2017, 2016, it's the same update. This is the actual list of properties that were reviewed by the consultants who prepared this report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And this would be Resolution 1849.
Are you doing it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. I move that the council adopt Resolution 1849, adopting the 2017 update to the historic resources inventory.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mark, I think that term for vinyl siding is remodeling.
You don't know how many times I've got phone calls that people want me to put vinyl windows in my 103-year-old house. It's like, really?
Yeah, you want to drive historic preservation's crazy, tell them you're thinking about putting in some vinyl windows and watch them. And they'll go nuts, yeah.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please, folks.
Counselor Sharmar?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously.
Could I make one comment on your last item? I wanted to mention, I'm a former COG employee, and I wanted to kind of explain a little bit, the COG, when I was an employee there, we saw our role as an extension of local staff. All the local governments in this area paid dues to help COG operate and pay the salaries of the staff. And the types of projects that you were just discussing are often the type that COG will pick up because your police chief doesn't have the time to do a comprehensive study of all the available resources, and that's where COG comes in. There was an example, when I worked at COG, where salmon and steel had recently been put on endangered species list, and local governments were trying to work on best management practices for things like de-icing roads, you know, with the walk, with the rock they put down winds up in the salmon spawning beds in the creek. And so what COG did was basically surveyed the landscape and came up with a best management practices, manual, to save all the individual communities the trouble of having to research and do that type of work. So that's kind of the role that COG provides. So with that, thank you very much for your support. This is my last city council meeting, so thank you all very much.
I was going to note that, just that Mark gave me the punch, this is Mark's last meeting. And I think, you know, you put in context, is arguably the last 10 years has been probably the highest level of progress in Monmouth history, and Mark's been heavily integral to all that. He embedded in every project, all the key thing, park improvements, downtown improvements. We were clocking a day, we're just kind of going through downtown. If you put all the park improvements, everything together, facade grants, we poured about $2.5 million into the downtown, you know? Yeah, that's a big period of time, so thank you. Nice things, and these are actually, Mark is really critical, great to work with, and these are legacy projects. These weren't just short-term, just mind the story, these are all permanent projects that people, you know, 50 years from now are going to still benefit from, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And I hate to tell you this, but you're not finished with me yet.
Oh, right, that's what, you got three boards.
Oh, yeah, he's around for another week.
So with that, we're at the point of council comments. Are there any counselors that have comments?
I have a question. How shall we respond to Minabella, who talked about her sidewalks being in dire need of repair?
We can bring that to a work session.
Yep. We talked about it before, we can bring it again.
Yeah, and it might be good to let her know that that's going to occur if she wants to get done on this, so she'll be invited to that. So we know which areas the sidewalks she's talking about, because there's, you know, there's good sidewalks and there's bad ones. We need to know what she's talking about. Right. Yeah. I would just like to comment and comment very positively on our Monmouth Engage Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. As Scott mentioned, that we had an open house, they, not an open house, a sort of open park discussion about their proposal to allow single-night camping in Gentle Woods Park. And I live in that neighborhood, and so I received information inviting, the letter inviting me and my wife to the, to that meeting. When we got there, they had a handout that provided the information, the things that they would propose or were initially in their draft, that they would be proposing to allow this with some rationale for it, and then took comment from people that were in favor of, that were, you know, opposed to, or were there simply to ask the question. And this was really precisely, I mean, this is Exhibit A in terms of, you know, a good job of a community group engaging the citizenry that's going to develop a proposal that will come before, perhaps, I'm not sure, perhaps planning, certainly in the council at some point. I mean, they really did a nice job, and they're to be commended for that.
Yep, absolutely, just to reinforce, I mean, the committee came up with a rough idea, we've worked through, they did research, made phone calls on impact, they came up with the handouts, materials, the group went down there and delineated, one of the members set up a tent to show people what a tent would look like, you know, and had that set up, and yeah, and they were taking the lead. This definitely wasn't a staff, can you go show up there and take comments from people? I mean, they were right there wanting to engage them.
And they were happy to take input from, you know, the people that were there, and, you know, positive suggestions. Some of them perhaps worked their way into their ultimate plan, but it was just really nicely done. Good to see.
All right. Anyone else?
One, I got two. One was, I want to thank all the citizens again for our birthday. I was down there, and there was 50 or better people, did a lot of work, got a lot done, and they were really good about doing the jobs with the weeding. It was mainly weeding, very little planning because of the dog-eared lock plans there. So I just say comments, that was really great for all those people to be there and show up. And the second thing was, the comment was, I did appreciate the meet and greet for the people that had interviewed for the job, for the planner. I thought, once it got settled down a little bit, it was kind of a ramshack to begin with, but to settle down, but I thought questions were asked very nicely, and, well, I was there anyhow, and went about the whole thing and trying to find out their backgrounds, but that's what I thought we were there for. Thank you.
Right. With that, I'm going to read the script for the executive session. The plan is to adjourn, well, not adjourn this meeting, but to recess this meeting so that we can go to the work session. When we're done with the work session and adjourn, we'll be back in the open session for the council meeting and then go into executive session. So this is the script announcement for our executive session. This is September 19th, 2017. The city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiation consultations. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6002D, labor negotiation consultation, or labor negotiator consultations, which allows council to meet in executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No discussion may be made, an executive decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. It is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from the executive session. So do I have a motion to recess the regular session to go into work session?
Make a motion to recess.
Right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those are favored?
Aye.
And so now we can take a short recess and go back to the, back to the room to work session. Thank you very much.
Hey, Counselor. That was for the first question.